The Princeton Historic Preservation. Okay. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission being held electronically via Zoom on June 7th, 2021 at 3:00 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place and agenda of this meeting has been turned noticed by transmitting a copy to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton, which has been posted to the municipal website www.pristinnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission will be held electronically via Zoom. Such notices have been placed in the official board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. So, the end. Elizabeth, do you want to do a roll call or should I?
Yes, I'll do it. Ms. Capazoli?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Endersby?
Here.
Ms. Satterfield? Shirley, you're muted.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Shore? Mr. Shore? I'll come back. Mr. Shatskin?
I'm here.
Ms. DeSanzo? Ms. Howard?
I'm here.
Mr. Pyle?
Yo, here.
Elizabeth, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. That Mr. Shore is here.
All right, thank, thank you and welcome to the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission meeting. We have two applications from Princeton University. The application of trustees of Princeton Major Site Plan with Variances, Environmental Studies, and School of Engineering and Applied Science. And we also have the application of Minor Site Plan with Variances, demolition of three houses to relocate house from 91 Prospect Avenue. So, and that, so anyway, I wanted to ask the Princeton University folks, given the fact that I think we have a lot of people who would like to comment on the 91 Prospect Avenue application, would it be terribly difficult to address that first in order to accommodate the public interest?
Hi Julie, Christopher de Bresia. I had mentioned to Elizabeth, we actually put together a presentation addressing both at the same time because they were interrelated and it was one report. So, and this is a courtesy review, so we thought it would be, it would be easier to present it all together at one time. So our presentation goes into both and not one application and then the next application. So, we'll have that done, you know, as part of the presentation.
Okay, well, since Elizabeth is having microphone trouble, why don't we start with your presentation and then I'll kind of summarize Elizabeth's report and then we can go into discussion.
Oh, okay. So you want us to start with our presentation first?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, all right, I think we'll jump right into the presentation. I'll just say one thing so that it's, it's, it's clear. This is a courtesy review. Both of the applications, as I indicated, ES and Cs, which is the first application listed on your agenda, is basically a project for educational buildings. It's for state-of-the-art research facilities for the School of Engineering, Applied Science, and Environmental Studies, ES and Cs, that's how it's got its name. And the other project is 91 Prospect, which is basically a relocation. When you take a look at the properties involved, neither of them are designated as a local historic preservation district or within a buffer district. And there's no specific historic sites that are designated under the local ordinance. So the zoning map doesn't have any districts or buffer districts around both of the projects. There is a reference in the historic preservation element of the master plan. It's not listed under the area of local historic preservation districts. Rather, it's in a suggested area to be studied. There's something over 50 areas, I think 38 properties, 10 roads, nine bridges, you know, something like 57 locations that are suggested as areas that should be evaluated. And then, once those results are done and looked at, then there could be consideration of putting it in the district. But as of now, it's not in a district. And there is no requirement for a preservation plan. So, you don't see an application for a preservation plan before the Historic Review Committee this evening. History and preservation, though, is an important part of the university. University is a very strong component of stewardship and preservation. And that's really the reason why you have two applications this evening. The second application, 91 Prospect, is really an application to save 91 Prospect. It's not in a location right now that it can be saved. And so, in order to preserve the building, the application, the second application, and to prohibit demolition of it, is essentially to move it across, move it across the street. Like I said, we'll be presenting this as one presentation this evening. And with that, I'd like to start with, introduce university architects. Ron McCoy, Ron, are you going to start us off or are we going to start with Meredith?
I'm going to start it, start us off and then I will bring Meredith in on cue. So I'm going to share my screen and begin. So let me say that I understand, we understand that there's a desire to move quickly through the presentation, allowing plenty of time for discussion and public comment. I'll do my best to do that. I'll go faster some parts, but some projects, parts of the presentation require an explanation of some of the context around the project. And I want to make sure that we're all clear about some of the foundational information related to the project. And Christopher just reviewed some of that. This is the site plan, overall site plan of both the ESCs and the proposed relocation of 91, 91 Prospect. And I'll, I'll talk about this project in the context of the university's commitments to overall historic preservation in just a second. You see here highlighted in red, the boundary of the Princeton Historic District. The, it is a state and national district. There are no individually listed properties in this, in this, related to this project. Because of the name of the Princeton Historic District, sometimes people think it's a local district, but it's not. Also, it might be helpful to talk about the, what's referred to as the Club Road District. The Historic Preservation Officer's Report refers to the 1996 Community Master Plan, which was amended in 2012. And there was a suggestion 25 years ago that there should be for, a suggestion for consideration of the Club Road District. We've asked a few months ago, the Historic Preservation Officer and the Chair of this committee for copies of the boundary that would describe the Club Road District, which is discussed in the, in the, in the Historic Preservation Officer's letter. We were told that they don't have a record of the area that was suggested for consideration. And although we haven't made it with a copy of that area suggested for consideration, the, the plan 25 years ago refers to the grand homes of the eating clubs. So we take that to be the kind of houses that are, will not, 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 that would not include the the three houses, 110, 114, and 116. And the plan, the 1996 Master Plan does indicate some suggested representative sites, but does not include those sites on the north side of the road. So recognizing that the relocation of 91 Prospect is a center focus of conversation for this meeting, we wanted to just introduce a couple of important topics. As noted, there is a suggestion of this should be considered for Club Road District and we're, you know, don't have information on that. So if someone here on the, in the, in the committee has information, that would be helpful. And to reiterate what Christopher said at the beginning, they are not in any historic district, neither state, national, or, or local. When the Princeton Historic District was modified in 2017, there was an opportunity to add these, these houses to the district and that opportunity was not taken. 62 Washington Road was added to this district, but these houses were not added to the district. So they remain outside of the district. The, I'm going to ask Emily if she can go to her screen. Emily Kirkland, can you, can we switch to your screen? I'm going to stop sharing. I've had, I've got some troubles and it's going to be painful if I have to work through this. So Emily, can we look at your presentation? Great. Okay, so if you can go forward. Okay, let's pause here. No, go back one. Okay. So, the letter we received today also asked for some explanation of the campus plan context. This is the 2026 Campus Plan published about three and a half years ago. And we were careful in the campus plan to indicate where growth could happen. It wasn't a promise that growth will happen there ever or over a particular period of time, but we are, we are purposeful in identifying opportunity sites for both near-term and long-term development. So this is all of the university land. On the next slide, Emily. We can now zoom into the area that's related to this particular project. So this is a detail from the 2026 Campus Plan. As you can see, we anticipated using the site of 91 Prospect for part of the ES and Cs project. You can also see the suggestion of a gateway. But importantly, you can see that there are no other neighborhood sites where, that were identified for university development as envisioned by the 2026 Campus Plan. This is important to note because I know that one of the concerns that was in the presentation from Clifford's Inc. and PPF, it cites a very disturbing precedent for future moves or demolition. I think the record would show that there's very little precedent. There's mostly a precedent for restoration and stewardship. And this is, this is an opportunity that we have identified in the campus plan. It's interesting, I went back to the 1996 Campus Plan. I'm sorry, the 1966 Campus Plan. And it also identifies this site for university development. And the point is that for more than 50 years, the university has recognized the benefit of enhancing a connection between the campus north of Prospect and the campus south of Prospect. And that's one of the goals. It's the campus connectivity that we are seeking to achieve with this project. Next. So as I've said a couple of times, university supports the goal of historic preservation and we have a record of being exceptionally strong stewards of our buildings. In just the past 20 years alone, we've preserved, we have preserved, rehabilitated more than 80 historic buildings and landscapes. Historic preservation as a, as a general principle has never been about freezing the past in time. It has always been about managing change. And that's one of the roles of this committee and of the, of the ordinance. Successful cities evolve through a combination of both preservation and historic development. So historic preservation is fundamentally about managing this evolution and this change. I want to just say it's not an either-or proposition. Change and preservation are constantly balanced in the evolution of cities, towns, and campuses. This project needs to be seen in the context of our overall record of stewardship. You see on this image, the, you know, a handful of those 80, 80-plus projects on campus and in the neighborhood. And we absolutely prefer to rehabilitate historic buildings whenever we have a chance. And that generally means when there's a reasonably good fit between the building and the function. It is not possible to achieve, to rehabilitate an existing building when, when there is an unviable fit between the programmatic need and the existing, and the existing fabric of the building. And that's what we're going to talk about here today. Next, next line, Emily. This is just looking at Prospect Avenue and the, and the buildings that we have stewarded over time. You see Benheim House, Campus Club, Carl Field, the former Elm Club, Boebst Hall. All of those have a programmatic fit between what we wanted to put in the building and the, the kind of spaces that were accommodated in those particular buildings. Can we go to the next one? This slide talks about, these are all within the Princeton Historic District. And this is just simply to say that we also have accommodated, a history of accommodating contemporary buildings within the historic context of the campus. So all these are contemporary buildings that respect the fabric scale and pattern making of campus in the historic district of the university. Next slide, Emily. I also want to say that any other architects, one of the qualifications that we selected in them for this project is their expertise in designing contemporary buildings in historic settings and also in their expertise in adaptive reuse. Next. So we'll return to this image a couple of times during the presentation. But the point here to be made is that this is the proposed new Theorist Pavilion, which is the piece that comes up and replaces 91 Prospect. And as I would say that it is very consistent with that previous slide of all the contemporary buildings in the historic district that Princeton has designed. And this building in particular, by all of its, its location, its setback, its volume, its height, its width, its mass, is compatible with the, with buildings on, on the street. Next. Right now, we're going to go this part, I think, and go a little bit more quickly through the context and planning principles of, of the project, just to give you some, some better background. This one is just the overall boundary of the site. We can go next. Here, we're showing these yellow circles, which talk about some social activity nodes. You can see one is going to be planned for the ES and Cs neighborhood. And importantly, you can see the diagonal pathway that connects from Prospect Avenue through the site for ADA access and how that connects to the overall network of pathways that go westward across the, across the campus. Next. This just simply diagrams the programmatic adjacencies. You can see how that connectivity between the campus south of Prospect and the campus north of Prospect is very important. Environment Studies has a handful of relatively new buildings. I mean, I'm sorry, School of Engineering and Applied Science has a handful of relatively new buildings on the north side of Prospect. We're not abandoning that campus. And connectivity amongst students and faculty from the north side to the south side is an important aspect of the gateway. Next. This again talks about how the campus making of the ES and C site is interconnected with the traditions of landscape and pathways and courtyards that characterize the sense of place of the Princeton campus. Next. And then this just highlights again the multiple gateways to the project. The one on the side of 91 Prospect is the easternmost gateway into the, into the project and also into the campus. Roper Lane's another one. And at the western end, on access with Fisher Benheim, there's another one. And then along Ivy Lane and Western Way, there are a handful of moments of gateway moments into the overall organization of the site. Next. All right, so let's take a little bit of time here to talk about some of the challenges of the existing 91 Prospect. This shows the relationship of the Theorist Pavilion to the CBE Building, which is off on the right. Most importantly, it's, you see these green loops and arrows on the, on the drawing. This, this talks about the, the need for experimentalists and theorists to collaborate and work together. Individuals will be in the Theorist Pavilion, going back and forth to the laboratories in the CBE Building. And so we have to create a state-of-the-art facility that allows that kind of proximity and combination and connectivity. Next. This shows the existing 91 Prospect and the, really the challenge and the disconnect of being able to relate the floor levels of the new CBE Building to the floor levels of the existing 91 Prospect. These floor levels differ by, you know, six to nine feet, which would require, which would require a complicated system of ramps, stairways, elevators to get back and forth between the, the two buildings and really would not accommodate the kind of connectivity that, that we need. Next. This then compares the plan configuration of the two, two buildings, 91 Prospect at the top and the Theorist Pavilion at the bottom. And the message here is that the family of spaces that are in the 91 Prospect Building work incredibly well for the Dean of Research Offices, which are currently the occupants of that. And so, as Christopher said, the opportunity to save the building with the, with a compatible use is what we're trying to achieve here. The Dean for Research fits 91 Prospect just the way the Cannon Club functions fit the original building, the way Carl Field fits the original building, the way Boebst Hall fits the original building. But the, but the, the space, the family spaces that we need for this project in order to recruit, retrain, retain the world-class faculty and students do not fit the family spaces that we need. And if we were to, if we were to do it, we would need to gut the interior to achieve the kinds of spaces that we need for this program. And then we just have a kind of shell of a building with facade. Next. So this is a summary of those points that, that 91 Prospect is literally too small. It doesn't have the right floor-to-floor heights. It's not accessible. It hasn't, it has, does not have the right amount of daylight. The configuration, it doesn't meet the family spaces that we need. And it's, and it's well suited for the Dean for Research. Next. This is then a slide that talks about the character inside of 91 Prospect. As I said, if we were to try to renovate the building so that we have the family spaces that we need for, for this particular project, then we would have to gut really the building to do that. By, by relocating it on the other side of the street, we can retain all of the existing fabric of the, of the building. Next. And then this then puts the building in context of the, of the street. We are working with the Prospect, Princeton Prospect Foundation to rehabilitate all the street trees. We have some challenges with the utility wires on the north side of the street, east of Olden. We're still working on that. But if you see the bottom right-hand image here of, of the beautiful quality of the street with the street trees, that's what we're sort of aiming to achieve. And I think in a way, that is the most dominant characteristic of the experience of, of Prospect as a street. And that's what this project will enable. So this is not, this, this renovation of Prospect Avenue is a separate project that we're working on. It's really not part of the, of this particular project. But obviously, it intersects this particular project. Next. And then to address just the overall context of the Theorist Pavilion, which you see in the upper left chair, number two, this diagram shows how the building in its, as I mentioned earlier, in its height, in its width, in its massing is very compatible with the pattern of buildings in, in, in the neighborhood. And its setback, which is shown on the, on the lower part of this drawing, is also consistent with the pattern of buildings in this neighborhood. Next. And then to talk a little bit about the architectural fabric, the building is, picks up the proportions of the framed windows, which are characteristic of the collegiate Gothic window systems. You know, the houses on the street are eclectic. They're different styles. But there is a dominant trend toward the collegiate Gothic, which has limestone windows surrounds. And this, the windows of this building, very simple, classic pavilion in the language of classical architecture, a contemporary version of that language. And then the proportions pick up the pattern of windows on Prospect Avenue. The material, these, these, these verticals and horizontals, you see, you see would be aluminum, but they are painted and finished with a texture that would replicate the limestone, which is, which is typical of the street. Next. And then we wanted to show just the setback of the building from, from the street to show how it fits into the kind of pattern of buildings in the neighborhood. On the upper right, you'll see the Theorist Pavilion with the Chemical and Biological Engineering Building sitting behind it. And you see that, that red dash line shows the kind of vista from a street view to the parapet of the CBE Building compared to the other buildings on this page, the Fisher Benheim, through the North Garage, the Prospect Apartments, or frankly, through some of the clubs. This, the massing of this building on the street is, is on the low side of those kinds of comparable massings. Next. All right, I'm going to explain this drawing briefly and then we'll talk about it. So up on the upper part, you're seeing a small-scale section all the way through the north elevation of, looking north of Prospect Avenue. So you'll see the McKimminian White Wall in the middle, the kind of colored piece of the wall. There we are. And then you'll see the site highlighted with that red bracket on the, on the right. Below here, you see the same image zoomed in that shows the parking garage on the left, the relocated 91 Prospect in the middle, and the 91, and the apartments on the right. And I, we present this just to say that there was a comment that the building was sandwiched in between existing buildings. I think you can see that there's a very generous proportion between this building and the adjacent buildings. It's more than two to one, which is pretty generous and bracketed by mature trees to the east and to the west of the existing building. Next. So, the, this is a view of along the street looking to the south. And we're looking at the space between two of the existing clubs. We're looking at the Environmental Studies Building in the distance. You can see the yellow line, which is drawn across the, the drawing. This shows the perspective and the height that you'd, you'd see of that building in the distance. So you can see it more or less lines up with the second floor level of the, of the clubs. This was another request to show the context of the, of the new buildings in the context of the street. So this shows how it sits there. Next slide shows how the existing condition is now with the vista toward the stadium. Next. And then this is also trying to address the request to get more understanding of the context. The upper drawing is, shows Prospect Avenue on the left, Ivy Lane on the right. And so we're looking at a section to look into the east. And you can see how the building tucks into the sloping hillside with four stories and a penthouse toward Ivy Lane, and then three stories and a penthouse facing to the north toward the clubs. The bottom drawing shows a section through looking to the north with Fitz Randolph over on the right-hand side of the drawing. The residences on Fitz Randolph there in the foreground, and then the CBE Building in the distance. Next. This then shows if you're on Fitz Randolph looking to the west, the yellow line again is the profile, the silhouette of the, of the CBE Building against the sky. And again, from here, you actually wouldn't even see the building and it would be below the rooftop of the buildings on Fitz Randolph. Next. All right, we'll talk briefly about building character and design. This is just to kind of give you a flavor of the design. So let's go through this part quickly. Next. Needless to say, we have a lot of sustainable sustainability principles built into the project. I'm not going to go through them here, but we can get to that if, if there are questions about it. Next. This is again about the, how the building responds to our Sustainability Action Plan, which is a university-wide set of initiatives. Next. One of the architectural elements of the plan of the buildings is to maximize the use of mass timber, which will reduce the embodied carbon of the project. And this diagram shows all those areas that are in a kind of yellow or orangish color are areas of mass timber construction. Next. This is the overall bird's eye rendering. So you see the building is intentionally sort of sinuous. It sort of inflects and gestures to break down the scale and mass of the building. It's, it is 660,000 square feet, so it's quite large. But we wanted to break down that scale so that it has, has a kind of campus fit to the neighborhood. Next. And then just going around the building, we like to say that the building has no fronts, has all fronts, no backs. So if you're looking at the north side of the building, this is an entrance into one of the atria. Next. If you're on Ivy Lane looking to the east, Peyton would be just off to the right. And this shows the forecourt into the Environmental Studies, as part of the project on the left. Next. This is a view toward the middle of the site. On the right is the Commons, which is a library space and a social space that serves the entire campus. And on the left, you see a set of stairs that climb up to the, seize, one of the Cs buildings, the Bio E Building. Next. If we're on If we're on Prospect and we're on Roper Lane, you'll see we are rebuilding Roper Lane, as I said, to make it ADA compliant. And this is a view toward the north side of the Studies Building. You'll see a kind of another atrium peeking out onto the right. Next. This is the view in that atrium, so it'll be a welcoming and inviting building on all sides. Next. And then we're starting to move a little bit to the east. This is a gap between the Environmental Studies Building on the right, the Bio Engineering Building on the left, looking at the Commons, the stadium would be beyond. Next. And then we're turning around now to the, to the east. We see in the foreground on the right, the north face of the Bio Engineering Building. We're looking at the chemical and biological engineering building and the bridge that connects the two. And then we're looking over to the Theres Pavilion, which is just peeking in the understories of the landscape on the west and on the street. Next. Here we are back at the Theres Pavilion, looking at the front of Pavilion. I would say that the landscape here is intentionally supposed to be open, welcoming, and public, and so, and contemporary. And so the simple grove of trees reflects the kind of classical, modern design of the building, creates a kind of gravelly plaza that people can crisscross in pathways. They're coming in on access here to the front entrance, or if they're coming in to the campus gateway, which is a little bit off to the right-hand side of this drawing. Next. Then, as you are on that access into the campus, you see the Theres Building clipping the left-hand side of this image. You see the gateway through the CBE Building going straight ahead. Also, I have a correction to make. One of our architects corrected me. I misspoke about the material of the Theres Building. It's a material that's a glass fiber reinforced, glass reinforced fiber. That is, it's a kind of panelized system. Next. And then here we are coming through the gateway into the site. There's a large, open, green lawn for the engineering side of the complex. We're looking at the Bio E Building on the left, the CBE Building on the right. And it's important to note that we're also above the loading dock. So there's a completely submerged loading dock that provides all the service and access to the project. And that's underneath this green plaza. Next. And then if you go to the, what we call the North-South Connector, which goes up the eastern side of the project, here's the entrance into that loading dock that you can see on the left-hand side of this slide. Next. Then back on to Western Way and Ivy Lane, looking a little bit toward the north and to the west, you see the Commons Building again. Next. Quickly through the site planning and landscape design, let's go next. I want to talk about some of the community connections. This is a part of the campus, but it's also provides pathways, walkways, and connectivity for the local community throughout the site. You'll see here on the left, or in the center of the diagram, the Roper Lane is dotted. Roper Lane goes, well now gets diverted and becomes Leafy Lane. That's the placeholder name that we've given it. That will become a pedestrian and bicycle pathway through the site, and also does provide vehicular access for service vehicles and for access to the back of some of the clubs. You'll see the North-South Connector on the right. That is a bypass street that keeps traffic off of the local neighborhood streets and provides access into the loading dock. Next. This talks about some of the gateways, as I've mentioned, the connectivity of this part of the campus, both to the west, to the existing campus, and to the north, to Prospect and beyond, is a key feature. And so you see these heavily emphasized blue lines that are the places of connectivity. And you'll see that one of them goes through the site of 91 Prospect, and the other one through Roper. Next. In terms of ADA compliance, we've realized from the beginning and from the campus plan drawing that I showed you, that getting accessible pathways through the site is very important. This is a kind of complicated drawing, but you'll see the, every time you see a red circle with that diagonal line through it, that's a stairway, which is not accessible. But there's always an accessible route. That's either adjacent to that, or one could go into a lobby, take an elevator down and get, connect from the upper part of the site to the lower part of the site. So the site is designed in a fully ADA-compliant way so that we can have a lot of easy connections and accessible connections through the campus. Next. And then the landscape has a variety of special places for gathering, for lingering, for social space, for community, for activities surrounding the site. And again, these become community assets, just the way the rest of the campus becomes a community resource for walks and enjoying the quality of landscapes that we do. Next. I'm just going to go through three slides here showing the vocabulary of native, this shows the mixed native planting of trees. Next. Some of the understory, native understory. Next. Sort of the native ground cover. Next. And some of the rain garden plants. Next. Okay, I think that we want to leave, I'm going to transition now to the 91 Prospect specifics of that project. I would like to say that, just closing this part of the presentation, that the university has enormous respect for the principles and values of historic preservation. We recognize that our first choice is to try to restore and reuse, rehabilitate existing buildings, but not every building can be preserved. As Christopher said at the beginning here, this is a plan to preserve 91 Prospect by moving it across the street. And we realize that choices have to be made, and this is one of the choices that we have to do, that we have to make for this particular project. In the context of three houses on the north side, 110, 114, and 116, just to reiterate, they're not in the local district, they're not in the state or national district. They've been consistently omitted from the Princeton Historic District. And this is an opportunity to prioritize and save 91 Prospect. So let's move on from here, and we'll go to 91 Prospect. So just coming back to this image, which talks about the relocation of 91 Prospect across the street. I'm going to ask Meredith Bizdak, our historic preservation consultant, to jump in here and to do two things. If you can help frame this part of the conversation and also pick up any mistakes or misstatements that I might have made along the way, that would be really helpful.
Thanks, Ron. I think you did just fine. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Meredith Bizdak. I am an architectural historian and a partner with Mills and Schoring Architects. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our preservation strategy and provide a little more information on 91 Prospect, as well as 110, 114, and 116 Prospect, and just let you know sort of the methods that we used and how this conversation evolved. As part of our due diligence, we work with the university to do evaluation on all of the buildings that are interrupted by the planning that goes on. So our evaluation involves a combination of research, fieldwork, and evaluation discussions. And there are many discussions that do take place about these things. They're always very seriously considered. As Ron said, one of the first things we look at is the current preservation status for buildings. In this case, as you've heard before, none are considered individual local landmarks. None are included in a designated local district. None are individually designated on a state or national level, and there have been no determinations of eligibility. 91 Prospect is included in the State and National Register Listed Historic District, otherwise known as the Princeton Historic District. 10, 114, and 116 Prospect are not included within that district, either originally or in the 2017 expansion of the district that focused on the eating clubs. And none of the four buildings are specifically referenced in the proposed Club Row Local District that's identified in the master plan. So some background first on 91 Prospect. It was constructed in 1927 as court club and designed by an architect named Grosvenor Wright. It was expanded in 1955, 1956 by a Princeton-trained architect named Raymond Olson. And Olson basically expanded the building according to the original designs by Grosvenor Wright with some limited changes. It ceased operations as an eating club in 1964, and it was purchased by the university at that point in time and repurposed as part of Stevenson Hall in 1968. It was converted to offices for the university's use in 2001, and it continues in that capacity today. With respect to 110, 114, and 116 Prospect, I think you're all aware that all three buildings were moved to their present site on the north side of Prospect in the 1920s, as eating clubs began to displace smaller frame buildings. And part of the story of the street actually is the story of change and evolution, and the way in which the larger masonry clubs, the more elaborate clubs, began to displace some of the smaller frame structures, the smaller residences that had previously been 110 was purchased from a private residence by Key &amp; Seal Club in 1904 and expanded by 1907. It had two more additions by 1918. In the mid-1920s, it became Arbor Inn, and Arbor is the one that moved it across Prospect to the north side of the street. It was purchased by the university in 1928, renovated and divided into multiple units. In one, with respect to 114 Prospect, that too was built as a private residence, moved in the 1920s, and some of its original queen and detail remains. The building at the present time is vacant. 116, also built as a private residence, moved in the 1920s, features some queen and style, but modified extensively, has an enclosed porch, an expansion to the rear, and was reconfigured rather extensively on the interior for use as faculty offices, and has little original detail remaining on its interior. So we looked at all four buildings with respect to the National Register criteria for eligibility, and those four criteria, the association with events that have made significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, association with lives of significant persons, buildings that embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or that represent the work of a master, or possess higher artistic values. And lastly, have yielded or may yield information important in history or prehistory. In other words, properties that are archaeologically significant. To be eligible, properties must also retain integrity, and to a degree that they are able to convey their significance. The National Register recognizes seven aspects of integrity. Those would be location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. In summary, 110, 114, and 116 are relatively typical examples of late 19th century dwellings, lacking individual distinction, and with varying degrees of retaining integrity. No information as to their association with significant events or individuals has been located. 110, 114, and 116 Prospect were all moved to the site in the 1920s, as I mentioned. Location is similar, but has been somewhat compromised and changed. 110 and 116 Prospect have lost integrity of design, materials, and workmanship. And in summary, we do not believe that these buildings are eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places individually. 91 Prospect, however, has a higher degree of integrity and has already achieved a level of distinction by its inclusion in the State and National Register Listed Princeton Historic District. So when we were weighing all of the options for the buildings in question, it emerged that 91 Prospect was worthy of preservation and saving, and hence its relocation to the north side of Prospect. Ron, I'll turn that back to you.
Actually, Meredith, let's go to the next two slides and have you, if there's anything you want to add as we look at those next two slides.
This is a current photograph of 91 Prospect. The original portions of the building are the center wing and the wing on the right side of this photo. The left wing is the one that was added in the 1950s, but that brought the building to its full configuration as originally intended. And in the work that is intended to occur, once the building is moved, there'll be restoration essentially of what exists as of the building envelope. And on the interior, it will be placed on a new foundation. The roof will be replaced with some new slate. Ron may have some more details, but it will essentially be exactly what you see here today. And there will be an attempt to place it in a context that is very similar to the one it exists within today.
Let's go to the next one, Emily.
And a couple of historic photographs. So the one on the left was photographed taken shortly after the building was completed and shows you that original center wing and right bay. And you'll notice that the entrance was originally at the center, but when the wing was added in the 1950s, that became the main entrance, and that center entrance was converted to windows. And that corresponds to the great hall that you see in the upper left here. The main hall, which is really one of the most significant character-defining places within the building, and one that we definitely want to preserve. And the photograph on the lower right shows that wing being added in the 1950s under construction.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's very helpful. I'll pick it up from here. So Emily, let's look at the next one. Just a reminder of the site. Next. So this shows just the logistics of relocating the building. The way it's done is by putting a grid of steel beams under the building, lifting it up, putting the grid of beams underneath it, rotating it so that it has the front door toward the street as it moves across the street and is relocated on the northern side of the street. You'll see the buffer of trees to the existing trees on the west and on the east of the proposed location. Next. This is just a site plan that shows that building in its proposed location. The red dashed line that goes around the building is really a part of the logistics plan. Those are the clearances that are required to move the building and to remove the steel grid from underneath the building. Next. This is just for information, the distances between the building and its adjacent buildings. As we said, there's some concern that it was compressed in that location. It's actually quite roomy and has a kind of park-like setting with the mature existing trees. And you'll see a handful of proposed new trees that I think complement that existing landscape. You'll also know that there's a 250-foot residential zone buffer. So there is a variance attached to this project for a residential to allow this educational occupancy in this residential neighborhood. But I think Sprab was very favorable for that and thought that this was improved the setback because the existing house, existing university buildings are closer to that buffer. Next. As Meredith said, the project will involve extensive rehabilitation of the building. So you see this diagram, obviously, the upper part is the part that's rehabilitated with the new roof, brick repointing, flashing gutters, dancepouts, and repair of the cast stone window surrounds. The green box, the lower part, the foundation is all new, and then it'll have a mechanical system upgrade as well. Next. This is a detailed landscape plan that shows the trees removed and the trees remaining. We don't have to go into this detail unless there are questions. Next. And then these are the 26 new trees that, as I said, complement infill and sort of, you know, sort of enhance that park-like setting of the building in the site. Next. And then some more details of the stormwater management strategy. I don't know if we have to get into that detail in this conversation, but there are ground cover types that have to do with, that serve the rain gardens and some of the existing lawn, which is in keeping with the neighborhood. Next. There are improvements to ADA pathways, so we retain the historic axial entrance from Prospect. And then we add an ADA pathway that comes up to the porch from Prospect. And then we also will add an ADA pathway in brick connecting to an ADA parking on the north side of the building. Next. And then this just talks about soil management strategies. It's, there's a reduction in impervious cover through this project. And nevertheless, there's the addition of these rain gardens, which will restore the water on site in addition to the creation of an infiltration trench that you see in the lower left. Next. Okay, I think that's it. One more. All right, so I think we can pause here. This is just an overall site plan that we can use for the basis of conversation whenever you have want to get to that part of the meeting.
Okay, I'm just going through some questions, two things I want to clarify, and thank you for your presentation. I wanted to clarify- I wanted to clarify for the public that the hearing today is we are being advisory to the planning board. So an overall decision on this application has not been made. And so our job today is to basically come up with a memorandum that will advise the planning board on our, our views and suggestions. That said, I did want to go over a couple of things in the report just because Elizabeth spent a long time working on it. And I think a lot of the material was covered in the presentation. But there was one point that I don't think was addressed and that had to do with that relocating a building could affect its its eligibility for preservation. So let's see, it just basically says that the the area is historic as well as the building. And so that may be a concern of, of people watching the presentation. I know that there's definitely questions on the commission side, but given that there are so many people wanting to put into public comment, I thought we could move to public comment. I guess we could, could we go back to the regular screen? Thank you. And then we could go to public comment and then go back to the commission for a follow-up. But Elizabeth and Justin, I think you guys are in charge of bringing in the people with their hand raised from the public. So Elizabeth and Justin.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I brought Clifford Zink in. I believe that he felt that he was probably the first person that should go because he could.
I can just interrupt for a second before Clifford speaks. There's been a lot of activity in the Q and A and in the chat. And I just want you to make sure that the public knows that those comments will not be part of the record of the meeting. So if people have questions or comments, they really need to raise their hand and participate in the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I think.
Clifford, you're brought in. Sorry, do you want, let me see.
I think Sandy and Clifford are presenting together.
They're both brought over as panelists.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hello.
Clifford and Sandy, if you could unmute yourself and put on your video.
Done.
Okay, so we're trying to keep it brief. There are, I think 60 people waiting to comment. So I guess if you want to start and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Sandy Harrison. I am the, I hope you can see me. Okay. I'm an alumnus of the university and I'm the board chair of Princeton Prospect Foundation. A major role of this charitable foundation is to educate the public about the historical and architectural significance of Princeton's iconic eating clubs, including the landscape along Prospect Avenue and to support their preservation. To this end, Princeton Prospect Foundation is profoundly concerned about the proposed moving of the former Court Clubhouse across Prospect Avenue and out of the Princeton Historic District and demolishing three historic homes and houses, including a former eating club to make room for it. In our view, such a move would substantially diminish the aesthetic and historic continuity of Prospect Avenue. And it would set a disturbing precedent for the future moving and or demolition of other historic eating clubhouses. Moreover, in our opinion, the university can achieve its functional objectives for a new engineering and science building complex without uprooting this portion of Prospect Avenue because there is adjacent university-owned land that can be used instead for what amounts to be a fairly small physical portion of this project. Princeton Prospect's foundations are concerns are supported by the alumni leadership of the 11 active eating clubs. In addition, over the past week and a half during which the public first became aware of the university's proposal to significantly disrupt the area of Prospect Avenue in question. There's been enormous concern expressed among town residents and others as evidenced by at latest count, 618 and counting signatures of a town resident generated online petition in opposition to the proposed moving of the Court Clubhouse. Lead stories on this issue also have been published in Planet Princeton and Town Topics along with letters to the editor and other comments from concerned citizens. Getting close to being done my spiel here. In 2017, Princeton Prospect Foundation engaged Clifford Zink, who is a historic preservation consultant, author and longtime town resident to document the history of the eating clubs for the National Register of Historic Places and to prepare a groundbreaking book on them with a special emphasis on their distinguished architecture and on the architects who designed them. This book also has spawned numerous talks as well as public tours and open houses of the eating clubs. I, along with Clifford and Carl Pettit, who is an alumnus architect and a native of Princeton, have worked since early last fall in an attempt to convince the university to develop a plan that will not denigrate the Princeton Historic District and Prospect Avenue. After Clifford and Carl speak next, we know there are many town residents who would also like to express their own views on this vital issue. So thank you Historic Preservation Committee and staff for your thoughtful consideration of this very important historic preservation matter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now I think we're going to Clifford.
Thank you, Julie. Can I share my screen?
I think, yeah.
Okay, let's see. How about, how about that? Can you see, everybody see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so let's start with the historic district. It was, as mentioned, established in 1975. A very large district. In that time, the details were not very extensive. So on the right-hand side, you can see the submission that we made in 2017, 138 pages of extensive details and photographic documentation of the evolution of the clubs. Ron and others seem to imply that the three houses were not worthy of inclusion and that's why we didn't include them in the expanded district. But that is not the case. This district was meant to, this additional documentation was meant to specifically address the major clubhouses that operated as eating clubs for a very long period of time. And the building at 110, which was an eating club, quickly went out of use. And so we included photographs of it, but it was not a feature of, of the documentation or the book. See if I can switch. So this shows, and we already saw a slide of the Princeton Historic District. You can see the boundary where Court Clubhouse is. This is just in case anybody has trouble understanding the district. It's only on the historic, the National Register District is only on the south side of Prospect. Now I hope you can read all this, but this is about National Park Service guidelines for a stark district, two different documents. The significance of properties is embodied in their sites and settings as well as in the buildings. Properties in the National Register should be moved only when there's no feasible alternative. And with evidence that the proposed site does not possess historical significance, that would be adversely affected by the intrusion of the structure. That's not what exists in this case. I mean, there is historical significance where the university is proposing to move 91. If a structure holds a prominent position in the middle of an historic district or a street that presents a unified appearance, its removal might leave an awkward gap or destroy the rhythmic harmony of the street or neighborhood. And that is certainly what is being proposed here. Moving an historic building destroys some of its historic fabric and lessens its integrity because it's coming off its original site. Moving of a stark structures can create a false sense of historical development, which will happen when 91 is on the other side of Prospect. It won't be sandwiched between the parking garage and the apartment building, but it will be isolated there. Isolated from the 10 other clubs on the north side of the street. Excuse me, the south side of the street. When a property is moved, every effort should be made to reestablish its historic orientation, setting and general environment. That of course is not proposed here because it cannot happen. But what will happen is Court Club will be deleted from the National Register as will the lot where, where Court Club now exists. So National Park Service Guidelines for New Construction Within the Boundaries of Historic Properties. New construction needs to be built in a manner that protects the integrity of the historic buildings and the property setting. I know it's a bit laborious to listen to me reading these, but this language is directly from the National Park Service and it is being ignored in this application. New construction should be placed away from or at the side or rear of historic buildings and it must not obscure, damage or destroy character-defining features of the building or the site. New construction, including landscaping, must not alter the historic character of a property. In properties with multiple historic buildings, the historic relationship between buildings must also be protected. Contributing historic buildings within a stark district must not be isolated from one another by the insertion of new construction, which is exactly what is being proposed here. So here we are, an aerial of the site which you've seen before. And you can see Ron talked about connectivity and all of us in town are really in favor of the university succeeding as well as possible. Ron talked about connectivity. You can see there's space between Court Clubhouse and the building to its left, which is the former Key and Seal Court Club, former Key and Seal Clubhouse. There's 37 or 39 feet in between those two buildings. It could certainly have a pedestrian pathway in there. And then there's university vacant land to the east of Court Clubhouse where it could, it wants to have a driveway to get to the main buildings. There's plenty of room for a driveway plus more connectivity, including potentially a smaller pavilion, which if designed to fit into the historic district would be perfectly accessible. If the university had said to its architects, we want to have connectivity onto Prospect Avenue, but we're going to respect the historic district and the, and Court Clubhouse and the three historic houses across the street. Anyad, the architects at Anyad would have said fine and they would have come up with a plan to accommodate that. So here's what the university is proposing. You can see how the bosque of trees does not fit into the historic district. On the right-hand side, my view of where it says section of Princeton Historic District that will be orphaned is obscured by small screens of various participants. But this is going to do exactly what the Park Service says is inappropriate, which is to orphan buildings in an historic district. This proposal does not blend in with the university's objective for this project to blend seamlessly into the current campus fabric. Instead, it will demolish houses that are part of campus history and it'll split and damage the district with incompatible buildings and landscaping. All of this is contrary to National Park Service policy for historic buildings and historic districts. So here's what the university is proposing. This is an earlier view of the Court Clubhouse site with the vehicular entrance off of Prospect Avenue. And we've seen much more attractive, prettier pictures of what this building will look like. What we have not seen, what the university has not submitted is showing how this building sits within the historic streetscape, showing its relationship to the historic buildings to the east and west of it. We've not seen that because it would show that it is incompatible and discordant with the street, the historic streetscape. So the Historic Preservation Commission in 1995 issued a report at the time, this has been referred to already, at the time that it was considering declaring Prospect Avenue a local historic district. And it said that the development of Prospect represents the fully realized integration of the 19th and early 20th century urban phenomena, self-perpetuating clubs. There is no campus in the United States that has what Princeton has, which is individual private eating clubs all lined up on one street. This is unique in the entire country. The clubhouses are characterized, this is language from the report, by front lawns and mature landscaping, which emphasize the deep setbacks. And very specifically, the last or the third bullet here says the fall for the smaller frame structures. It is referring to 110, 114 and 116 to the east of Ferris Thompson are included in the proposed district because they were moved to these sites after club use elsewhere and are part of the district's visual and institutional history. In 2012, the historic preservation reiterated the, the desire to declare an historic district on Prospect Avenue. Instead of calling it the Prospect Avenue Historic District, in the master plan, it was called the Club Row Historic District. It specifically says buildings and structures on both sides of Prospect Avenue and a portion of Washington Road. We heard testimony before that it did not include the three houses, but clearly it does on both sides of Prospect Avenue. Now, here we are in 1911. And Elizabeth's very excellent report referred to Fielder Beekman cottages. And here are the Fielder Beekman cottages. So here's Prospect Avenue. Here's the university field. Here's the Ferris Thompson Wall and Gate. Here's the former charter club replaced by the current one. Here's the current cap and gown, current cottage, current elm. And this is Olden Street. Here we have these four houses. And over here, we have Key and Seal occupying what was called the Carroll House, which was another one of these Queen Anne cottages. So this is now part, this has been moved to 110 Prospect to make way for. to make way for Cloister Inn and, I mean, excuse me, for the new Key and Seal building. And these four buildings were moved to make way for Cloister Inn and for a larger Charter Clubhouse. This building is now at 114 Prospect, and this one is now at 116 Prospect. They are part of the district's visual and institutional history, as the HPC's 1995 report said. Here is the Carroll House occupied by Key and Seal at this time, when this postcard was issued. Here's the former Charter Club, same site as the new one. This Tower Club is a former cottage club building that Tower took over. This is now on the site of 91. This building was added on to in 2014. And here you see the addition in the front of it, a Georgian Revival addition. You can just barely see, there's a little bit of the Carroll House peeking out from the back of the building. This is clearly part of the district's visual and institutional history. Here is 110 Prospect, virtually the same, losing a few details on the outside, but virtually the same as it was up the street. Here is the back of the building, and here is the Queen Anne House that was originally called the Carroll House. It was mentioned that these buildings have some additions. So naturally, over a period of time, as these buildings were adapted to uses, they had some additions put on the outside. And you can see that these additions were done very carefully to blend in with the historic character of the buildings. Here is 114 Prospect. This is very interesting. This appears to be, possibly be, a new porch, but a lot of the rest of the building, the scallop shingles, the overhang, looks like even the windows, shutters, might all be original, the front doors. And here again, part of the back may be an addition, but look how careful, how carefully it was designed to blend in with the original architecture. And here, you can see all three of the houses have stone foundations when they were moved here. Now, besides the architectural history and besides the fact that this is part of the district's visual history, it's also part of the institutional, these three buildings are also part of the history of Princeton University. It turns out that a number of very important faculty members lived in these buildings. And so it's easy to think that because of their proximity to the campus, that they were very desirable residences for faculty. They're closer than the White City buildings, a little further to the east, and they're very prominent. And you can see here, this building was the residence of Erwin Panofsky. And he was called, or he has been called, "The most influential art historian of the 20th century." Other, other very important faculty members that we have been able to identify so far as occupants of these buildings include art historian Thomas Kaufman, a woman named Froma Zeitlin, who was a very prominent classic scholar, who lived in one of these houses for a number of years, and the architect Anthony Vidler, who was a very prominent teacher at the Architecture School for a very long time. So, there's a history to these houses that has not really been fully investigated. And I think it would reveal that after these houses were moved here, they became part of the university's provision of faculty housing. And in fact, and in fact, they were residences of very important people. There's an article about Erwin Panofsky living in this house that talks about Albert Einstein visiting him there. So, there is a great deal of history here that, I think, could lend itself to establishing the, or as additional evidence of the eligibility of these buildings. Here is number 116. Professor Kaufman lived at this building for a number of years. You can see up on the right photograph, on the upper right, it has what's called a sleeping porch. And that sleeping porch is, it looks like it's been enclosed. And this may have some other changes. Look at all those little, look at all those windows with the small divided lights on the facade. They appear to be original windows. You know, we have not received any documentation of these houses. None that I am aware of has been submitted to the public on the inside or outside of these houses, documenting them as not significant. Nothing has been submitted showing what's on the inside of these buildings. I made a request through Kristen to take a walk through these buildings. I've been an historic preservation consultant since 1985 and an architectural historian. And I've been in many historic buildings, even in very poor shape. And I said, "I would like to see how much original material remains in these houses." And she said that access was not possible. In any case, even if the interior of these buildings has been altered, so some of the original fabric has been removed, Historic Preservation Commission and National Register designation normally does not include the interior of historic properties. It just includes the exterior. And you can see that these three houses maintain a very high level of integrity from their original construction and their adaptive reuse here for faculty housing. They are, are they individually eligible for the National Register, as we heard? The answer is probably not, as we heard. But are they collectively eligible as contributing buildings to the historic district? Absolutely. And they should not be unnecessarily demolished. So, preserving the integrity of the Princeton Historic District and the historic Prospect streetscape. We all need to keep in mind that Prospect Avenue is a public street. It's not Ivy Lane and Western Way, where everybody is perfectly comfortable with the university doing, you know, building what it would like on its private streets. The best sustainable action, the university promotes sustainability. We're very happy that it does. And the best sustainable action is the existing building with its embodied carbon. Siting of Court Club on the south side of Prospect is a key component of its historic significance that would be lost in a move and a 180-degree rotation. Inserting an incompatible building will bifurcate the district, isolating its ease and irreparably harming its significance. Moving Court Club and three historic houses will set a precedent for more encroachment on Prospect. I know that we heard testimony that this is not the case, but this absolutely sets a precedent. Once, once this, once 91 Prospect is moved across the street and these historic buildings are, the three historic houses are destroyed, it's very easy to think that in the future, five, 10, 15 years from now, some more, the university will come along and say that it has good reason to demolish another, or remove another of the four other clubhouses that it owns. And so this is a very dangerous precedent for this and other historic districts in town. And what it really comes down to is the university has not identified a compelling reason to justify this damage. The most that we've heard is that the university wants strong connectivity onto Prospect Avenue. And everyone recognizes that. The university has adequate space on both sides of Court Club to have its connectivity. The area around there that comes up to Prospect Avenue was not identified as one of its major nodes. When you get out there, you know, what do you confront? You confront the parking garage. And so, you know, this is not a major node at the intersection of its connectivity to Prospect Avenue. And like I said, if the university had instructed its architects from the beginning to preserve Court Club and still have a distinguished gateway or connectivity, pedestrian, and truck access on the open land that it owns on either side of Court Club, then certainly the architects would have followed that, that, you know, that instruction. So, we asked the HPC members to reject the university's application. I know that Julie said, "This is courtesy review." But we asked the members to write that this, the university's application is not appropriate for the historic district. As Sandy said, he and I and Carl Pettit have been reaching out to the university since last October to try and, to try and encourage the university to develop a design that follows National Park Service policy by keeping Court Clubhouse in place and maintains the character and significance of the streetscape and the Princeton Historic District. Thank you very much for your concern and attention to these very important issues, which will, again, set a major precedent for not only this historic district, but other historic districts and sites in Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Clifford. Elizabeth, do you want to proceed with the next person?
Yes, Madam Chair. I did get a request for Carl Pettit to.
You're fading out, so.
Carl Pettit is promoted to panelist to put a summary on this presentation.
Carl Pettit.
Okay.
Okay. As introduced, I am Carl Pettit. I'm a member of the Class 67 and a board member of the Princeton Prospect Foundation. I'm an architect. And my primary clients as an architect have been higher education institutions for whom I provided master plans and design services for individual buildings. I just want to underscore that Sandy, Clifford, and I have been really collaborating together to try to influence the university in conversations that we've had with Ron McCoy and Christian. And all of the comments made to this point, I support wholeheartedly. So I'm not going to, you know, reiterate them individually. But, and just reflecting on a couple of issues presented in the design for the new campus, I certainly would argue that the proposed, I'll call it, dense planting of trees and gravel for Court in front of the Theorist Building really is out of character with the streetscape indicated by all the other clubhouses. In fact, along the sidewalks, you will find either a hedgerow or a masonry wall. It sort of is the threshold into that front lawn, which really is a special feature. And I think that that really, I see as a problem. Second of all, the building facades indicated in the renderings and perspectives that Ron presented have a masonry aspect to them. In fact, it's brick. And I would maintain that, you know, the material proposed for the Theorist Building, the IFIS material, which is white, really fights against the materiality of the other clubs. Because as in his arsenal, he certainly has a masonry facade that would be much more appropriate. But again, I support Sandy's and Clifford's presentation recently provided. And I'd like to turn the rest of the discussion over to the other folks in the public audience. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Carl. Okay, Elizabeth, let's keep going.
You're on mute.
Oh, you're on mute, Elizabeth.
Sorry. Christine Lewandowski has asked to be next because she has a time restriction, so I'm elevating her in.
Oh. Okay, great. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Christine Lewandowski, and I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I served 33 years in the employ of three municipalities, including the last 26 years of those 33 years as the Princeton Township and the municipal, and the municipality of Princeton's Deputy Development Officer, Deputy Zoning Officer, and its first Historic Preservation Officer. I've read the staff reports and reviewed the plans, and I have the following comments. I do not support the intrusion of the Princeton University Project into the historic district and streetscape. I do not support the demolition of three historic homes and the moving of the Court Eating Club. I do not support the proposed landscaping and building of the proposed new college. Yeah, I guess it is not a college, it's more of a school, into the historic district. These proposed actions upon a residential street are without precedent. I heartily support the report of the Princeton Prospect Foundation's report and its conclusions and recommendations that were outlined by Clifford Zink. I also support the recommendation of the report of Elizabeth Kim, the Historic Preservation Officer. The university could be praised for starting an engineering and environmental engineering school. But it is quite ironic that the proposed project will bring great environmental damage to an existing developed historic streetscape. It will take away the stored energy in the buildings the university proposes to demolish, and it will use much additional energy in the demolition of these houses and the moving and reconstruction of the large Court Masonry Building. The former Court Eating Club should be incorporated into the design of the new college. This will keep the existing streetscape and provide an old-world design juxtaposed with a modern structure. The modern structure would be hidden behind the eating clubs, and it would be in keeping with the university's 2016 master plan. Princeton may have a history of moving buildings, but this is a radical departure of demolition and introduction of changes in the streetscape. The moving of buildings was mostly done in Princeton at a time when there were no ordinances or guidelines. We now have the tools of ordinances and guidelines in the present. So, the former Court Eating Club should be incorporated into the design of the new college. The demolition of the three historic houses and the movement of Court changes the mental maps and images we have of Prospect's streetscape. And me, it creates a negative visceral response. When I first heard of the university's proposal, I just couldn't believe it. Kevin White, in his landmark planning book, The Image of the City, reflects on the way people create mental maps and images of the city where they live and work. His book studies different characteristics of cities that help people create personal mental images to help them navigate towns and cities. The municipal land use law requires positive reasons to be proven for the. to be proven for the C-two variance the applicant has requested. It has to include that the benefits of the proposed deviation outweigh its detriments and that the proposal is better for the community than the zoning requirement. Its deviation does not outweigh its detriments and the proposal is not better for the community. The university cites in its variance application that they are improving the current conditions and that a detrimental impact on the neighboring Prospect apartment sites is not a concern. They say it is not a concern because they own the Princeton Apartments. This project is in their own self-interest. Um, the municipal land use law uses the word "community" and it requires the applicant to notify property owners within two hundred feet of the variance request. This list of owners within two hundred feet is on the third page of the applicant's minor site plan for ninety-one Prospect. I counted the properties, there's sixty-four, and the university owns twenty-one of them. The community, though, is very, very much more than the adjacent university property. The community is of the people who work and live there. The university is altering the perception of the streetscape by the demolition of these three houses and the moving of a national register building. And they're introducing landscaping and a structure at the court site that has no, um, relatability to the streetscape. This variance should be denied as it does not have the benefits that the proposed deviation outweigh its detriments and the proposal is not better for the community than the zoning requirement. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, okay, Elizabeth, let's keep going.
Okay, the next person I will bring in is Professor Martin.
Okay. Okay. Can you turn on your video and unmute? Oh, there we go. Hi.
Hi. Thank you so much for, uh, letting me speak. I really appreciate it. Um, so I'm Ava Martin and as a Princeton alumna and a scholar of intellectual and aesthetic history, I would like to speak a little bit more about the historical and cultural legacy of the three Victorians on Prospect Avenue. As I've walked or ridden past these homes on my way to campus, I've often reflected on the luminaries that have lived there over the years and the tremendous contributions to scholarship that has taken place behind their windows. As detailed in a twenty-twelve article by Thomas Kaufman, these unassuming turn-of-the-century dwellings have been the spaces where some of the most celebrated minds of the last century lived, gathered, exchanged ideas and wrote. In the nineteen thirties, the center of this vibrant intellectual life was at one fourteen Prospect in the home of Erwin Ponowski. A giant in art history, Ponowski wrote some of his most important texts at one fourteen Prospect, including Studies and Iconology, a work which shook art history in its era and has a lasting impact today. Another great art historian, W. S. Hextor, followed Ponowski to Princeton and he spent his first night in the United States at one fourteen Prospect. The famous English literature professor, Rensselaer Lee, author of Ute Pictora Poesis, met Ponowski in his living room at one fourteen and there they discussed Spencer's Three Graces, the connections between word and image and conversations that helped found interdisciplinary studies in the twentieth century. In the nineteen forties, Oliver Strunk, arguably the most influential musicologist of his time, lived at one fourteen Prospect and there he conceptualized and wrote source readings in music history. Some of the great scholars who found inspiration in the Prospect Victorians are still living. Professor Froma Zeitlin, Princeton's leading scholar of ancient Greek literature and philosophy until twenty-ten, author of Playing the Other and recipient of a twenty-sixteen honorary doctorate from Princeton University, lived and wrote for a very long time at one fourteen Prospect. Thomas D. Kaufman, a legend in Renaissance and early modern art history, the Markwan Professor of Art and Archaeology, whose global and collaborative approach to the history of art has profoundly impacted my own graduate work as well as countless others, lived at one sixteen Prospect for ten years in the eighties and nineties. I understand why university architects wish to build a theorist's pavilion for the twenty-first century. They have not presented a convincing case for tearing down the actual and historic theorist's pavilion in the Queen Anne's on Prospect Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Elizabeth, let's keep going.
Hey. Um, next person is Louis Hamilton.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Okay, I see. Hello?
Hello, thank you. Um, yes, so my name is Louis Hamilton. I'm a, um, I'm an historian at another university. Um, I live around the corner from these buildings on Murray Place and I want to underscore, um, a point that's been made by Mr. Zink that given the university's property holdings on Murray Place and in the area, this is a very dangerous precedent for the historic homes of the area. Mr. McCoy said that Princeton has respect for the principles of historic preservation. But in eleven years I've lived here, I have seen, um, two late nineteenth-century buildings torn down on Olden William Street, the destruction of the early twentieth-century career house at Olden Prospect and these slow motion destruction of the area further isolates and orphans buildings and gives credence to the idea that the buildings are not significant or isolated and can be destroyed in the future. Uh, in addition, in the community as a whole, universities, uh, incredibly generous subsidies of mortgages, um, for faculty members puts an, exerts an enormous pressure of gentrification and on, in the community and further promotes the destruction of smaller traditional homes, uh, in the area. I highly propose that the buildings be preserved as is in support of Mr. Zink's, uh, point, but more so I prefer, uh, propose that they be restored, uh, returned to residential use either as affordable housing or given as reparations to the descendants of Princeton's enslaved peoples from the eighteenth, uh, century into the nineteenth century. And that would not only, um, restore, preserve, uh, a piece of history in the community, but it would restore, uh, in a bigger sense, part of Princeton's historic character. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Elizabeth, let's, next person?
Next person, next person is Melanie Stein.
Okay. Hello, I hope everyone can see me. Sorry, I see from a prior call, I've got a cicade in the background, but, um, that's okay. Um, I'm, I am a resident of Prospect Avenue and I wanted, um, it to be clear that there are residents of Prospect Avenue who support the project, who find it exciting, who find it, um, inspiring, welcoming and are looking, um, toward all the value it has. And in fact, I would urge, um, the, the panelists to, uh, recommend the approval of the project. And I will say, you know, after I, I first heard about this issue uh, through a posting on Nextdoor, I think it was last week, by someone I do know in the community and have great respect for. And I got in my car and I drove down the street to look what the issues were. And, um, you know, I don't, I, I'll observe that in looking at the three places to be torn down, they didn't look, uh, particularly historic to me in sense of grand architecture. And if we think about what's going on in the larger Princeton community, I think we have many bigger issues as a community that we should be focusing on rather than, um, these, these three things. And I, I will say, I welcome, I am a graduate of the university and I graduated in the eighties and to me Prospect Avenue and the clubs in the eighties was a place of exclusion. The hedges that were there, I see as symbols of, um, a past history that some of us, uh, might be happy that we progressed from. And I find the idea of pathways connectivity to the campus, um, the activities that, um, I know many community members welcome. I attend things not just as, you know, an alumnus, but as a member of the community. I look forward to all of that and I look forward to the fact that there'll be world-class research in theoretical and experimental things that will hopefully, uh, progress our society coming out of buildings right on Prospect Avenue. That's exciting to me. And I really think that we should think about, um, what, uh, could be served by the research that would be going on in the buildings and be proud of them and also think about the things that we've just seen in the images of the native plantings of the ADA, of the accessibility to the community and all of those issues. It doesn't mean that it's perfect or that there aren't concerns. Personally, I'm concerned about traffic and transportation, but I would urge my community members on this, uh, on this, um, uh, webcast to think about the larger context of the issues we have in our community on transportation, on fabric, on architecturally renewing our educational structures, on the tree canopy, on resiliency to climate change. Uh, we need native planting, stormwater. The university is helping us address some of these issues in the larger context of the research it's going. And I really think that all of the energy that is being put into this fight about tearing down these three not particularly wonderful homes could be better used in solving some of those larger issues of our community, of which, by the way, I have great concern and in particular about transportation. And, uh, I would be interested to hear from the university how they're planning to handle, um, the increased transportation, uh, you know, transport issues we might see around all of this new development that's going on rather than, you know, this issue about these three homes. So, and, and in closing, I will just say that I moved to Princeton at the time of the dinky fight. And, you know, one of the most discouraging things about moving to Princeton, where I moved from New York City, but I've lived in a lot of places and around the world. The most discouraging thing about Princeton is how anything becomes this like monumental fight, most reasonable proposals become this monumental fight. And I just urge everyone to think of what the Lewis Center has given us all after all those years of those dinky fights and what we could have been better doing with all that energy spent on the dinky fight, maybe solving some of the other transportation issues in town. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, we're gonna move on, yes.
Yep.
Adrian.
Hello, sorry about that.
Hello.
My name's Adrian Travison. I'm an architectural historian. I live, uh, over by the high school in a Queen Anne Victorian. And I just wanted to say briefly that, um, I thought Clifford Zink's presentation ticked all the important boxes, mentioned all the, uh, important points, uh, particularly the concept of the streetscape and the embodied energy. Um, one thing that he mentioned that I just want to underline is, is, uh, my concerns about precedent. Uh, as we, I think it was mentioned, the university owns the Prospect Apartments. Uh, and I guess a step after this could be the university has a long-term view, could be the Prospect Apartments coming down. Uh, the White City, uh, but I think we all know the university has, for some of them, if not all of them, uh, an option to, uh, take the buildings, uh, back on a three-year advance notice. So in twenty-five or fifty or a hundred years, um, we could see modern buildings pushing all, well, I suppose not all of us, but the, the town could see modern buildings pushing over to, um, to Harrison and again, losing the historic fabric of the, uh, of the town. So I just wanted to, uh, mention that to everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next person will be Kip Cherry.
Okay. Kip, can you turn your video on?
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I want to talk about a couple of things. Um, there's no question about the importance of this applied science complex and I think it's a really exciting opportunity for the university and for the community. And I look forward to a lot of really fantastic iconic modernistic design along Ivy Lane. And, uh, I think that this building, uh, represents a, a major opportunity uh, for the university and for the town, uh, to have a transition building that pulls together essentially Ivy Lane and Prospect Avenue. And Prospect Avenue, uh, is, uh, obviously been discussed quite a bit about its historic value. I think, uh, that, um, the fact that it is an evolutionary history is something that, uh, we need to keep in mind now because we are now taking another step in that evolution. And, uh, I think that preserving the corridor's character is very important to that evolution. And I think that, uh, making the new building, the modernistic building, work, uh, is very important. And I think maintaining the, uh, Court Club is an important part of that thinking. There are many star architects, uh, around the world and I've had a lot of experience with them who have, uh, incorporated, um, historic buildings into their designs. And, uh, sometimes it's a little bit odd because on three sides is a modernist design and on the fourth side is an historical design and, um, but that happens because of the importance of the building and the context. And it's easy to do. It's not a big issue for any good architect. So I'm very concerned that we are ignoring, uh, the importance of preserving the corridor in that we are talking about demolishing, uh, three houses that have, uh, obvious value. Uh, and, um, I want to discuss too the, uh, topographic issue that was raised uh, because again, any good architect can handle a topographic change and that's not, that should not be an issue. Uh, in, besides that, uh, the topography affects the new building regardless. So, um, having an historic building at the, as an appendage to it, uh, shouldn't be an issue at all. Uh, and when you talk about ramps and steps, uh, that's just a natural way to handle any topographic issue, both exterior and interior. There's no reason why you can't have very, very convivial space, uh, with, um, that kind of, um, setup. And, um, I would hope that students can easily traverse any steps or ramps that might be involved. So, um, I think that, um, we also have talked about sustainability and quite frankly, the most sustainable thing you can do is to maintain an historic building and not tear it down or move it. Uh, so, um, I think that if the university wants to be consistent in trying to be the most sustainable possible, that consistency means retaining the, uh, Court Club and retaining the three, uh, Queen Anne Buildings across the street. Um, also, um, I want to talk about the variances, uh, very quickly because that hasn't really been brought up much. Christine Lewandowski brought them up, but of course that's the, um, elephant in the room because, uh, in order to, uh, move the building, there are variances involved. And, um, in order to get a variance, you have to have, um, what they call in the MLUL, the state statute, a peculiar condition. I do not see any peculiar conditions in this situation. I do not see any peculiar conditions in this situation. I don't think the topography is a peculiar condition. I don't think that the lots are narrow or any of that sort of thing. None of those are peculiar conditions. And at the same time, the MLUL instructs the planning board to look at the public good and whether the variances would create a detriment to the public good. And I would argue that there is a detriment to the public good in that we will lose three historic, well, we'll relocate one historic structure out of its location and diminish its value and lose three other historical structures. So I think that really is not the way to go. And I would hope that the university reconsidered because I think great design means tying together the context and the environment. And the environment is a physical place. And I think that the university's strength is in its ability to tie together the historical and 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 future environment of that campus and to send that message to the students. Because that is a part of considering applied science and engineering is to consider how to how to draw together the historical world and the and the future world. And so I think that creates a really great message for the kids. And I would hope that the university would put more emphasis on that message. I think that there could easily be a glassy entrance tucked in behind the court club that would provide so-called presence on Prospect Avenue without violating the character of Prospect. So I think that would be a compromise that's well worthwhile. As far as the programmatic requirements of the building, I don't know any buildings that don't require classroom space, office space, conference space. Those are the kinds of spaces that would work very well in the court club as as an appendage to the building. So I really think that just widening our imaginations a little bit would make a lot of sense. And I do think the fact that Prospect is a public road is something that needs to be considered, that the town does have a vested interest in this road and in the life of the community as affected by the eating clubs over the years. And I don't want to diminish that history. Some of it hasn't been great, such as the confrontation with Sally Franks, for instance, when she wanted entry into a eating club. But that's part of history. And it's, and the beauty of it is how the university community moves beyond that history. It all goes back, you know, to the American Revolution. And so history is part of our blood and part of our context. And we need to elaborate on it. We need to be excited by it and we need to preserve it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Martha.
Oh, hi. Uh, you're muted.
Good evening and thank you for hearing me. I'm really calling briefly in support of both Clifford Zink and Christine Lewandowski, who I think made the case really beautifully for the point that I was going to make, which is historic preservation is not just the buildings. Historic preservation is the context and the streetscape. I've been involved in historic preservation through my own house since I moved here. And when I think about an alumni going back and finding their eating club across the street, you'd feel dizzy. That's part of what historic preservation needs to hold on to. And as to Kip's point about transition, I do feel as though the eating clubs provide a really lovely natural transition into Princeton residential area, Riverside District. That is lovely. And the the fact that there are other options, good options, I would imagine, that don't require any of this would seem to me to be reason enough to say, well, then why? I don't understand why they have to do something to destroy historic preservation when they have other options. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Uh, Martha, could you provide your last name for the record?
Yes, it's, excuse me, it's Reinhardt, R.I.N.E.H.A.R.T.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Person is Thomas Kaufman.
Hi, Thomas, can you turn on your video?
Trying to turn on my video too. I don't know why it's not. Can you hear me at least?
Yes.
I'm sorry that the, I don't know why the video's not working, but there's some issue here. Anyway, after all the nice things that were said about me and there was, my point was already, I hesitated to participate in this. But I did want to talk about one further aspect about the, you know, the historic personage, namely Owen Panofsky, who lived in the, in 114. I should add that I'm Mark One Professor of Art and Archaeology and I've lived in Princeton for 44 years, going on to 45 now. And I'm a beneficiary of many aspects of the university's use of these houses. And I'm currently in a, whatever you call it, a grape farm's house, which also had been moved. What I wanted to address was the significance of Panofsky and his presence there in 1934 to 38. That is to say that Panofsky, just for those who are not in my field, as most of you aren't, does have the importance that Jeffrey Smith assigned to him as being the, perhaps the most important art historian of the 20th century. And a person who, in fact, was important for the rise in our field and who also taught at the university as well, being a member of the Institute for Advanced Study from 19, well, from before 34, but from 33 or so on to his death in 1968, and was responsible for the formation of many people, both directly and indirectly. His widow, I should add, is still a resident of Princeton. He, the point I would like to make that hasn't been made so far is that the existence of 114 Prospect and the fact that that house was made, was available to him and the fact that he had people visit him there or stay with him there, like Hekcher, underscores a positive aspect of Princeton's history, which should not be forgotten, namely its reception of refugees here from the Nazis and people who, like Hekcher, were anti-Nazi. So that needs to be stated when we're talking about Princeton history. And I would also just ask, and I suppose that the university and colleagues like Dr. Bizdok, who has spoken, I suppose that they were not aware that he had lived there because I can't imagine that the Institute for Advanced Study or the university would tear down Einstein's house. So that's all I would say. And thank you for listening to me. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next person is Ash Martin family.
Okay. Hi, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, let me start my video. Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jim Bash and I've lived here in Princeton for 21 years. I love the university. I'm a big booster and it brings so much to our town. I have supported almost all of their projects over the decades of being a homeowner here. Being an engineer myself, I am in favor of the new engineering complex to replace the aging E quad facilities. And what we have seen is that most residents and alumni attending today here, and I expect elsewhere, are similarly supportive and do not take issue with the project generally, the benefits it will bring to the university and to our community. But the university already has nearly 15 acres for this site, their single largest expansion in modern history. The complex is almost entirely along Ivy Lane, with all the space they need there, and even an unused two-acre area that is currently labeled future development. You can see it in Mr. McCoy's slides. The sprawl up to Prospect is unnecessary and encroaches on a residential neighborhood, destroying three beautiful Victorian-era homes, which are rich in history and were actually on that street first, predating all extent, eating clubs, while moving the contributing Court Clubhouse out of the Princeton Historic District to only gain an additional half acre in the process. For some years now, while walking by along Prospect, as I do so often, I've noticed the three Victorians have not been well taken care of and I haven't understood why. I almost wrote Kristen Applegate about it on a couple of occasions. But just like any other building they own, the university has the responsibility for their proper upkeep. So it is puzzling to see the caretaker to make a claim here of any lost perceived integrity. But each of the Victorians supports the other in a cohesive historical group. By contrast, Court would be isolated to where it doesn't belong and cut off from Eating Club Row. It is damaging to the history and legacy of this grand avenue. And to most people's sensibilities, it is avoidable sprawl. There is no academic, educational, or research imperative for it to happen. In fact, there is a vacant lot immediately adjacent to 91 Prospect with plenty of street frontage to provide a third northern access point to the new buildings on the east campus, similar to the other two entrances that Mr. McCoy highlighted further west on the street. Princeton has been the number one or number two university in the country every year since 1993. So there seems little risk that everything is going to go down the tubes if this edifice is not constructed in that precise location, but elsewhere on the vast site while maintaining campus connectivity from both sides of the Court Clubhouse, plus the other access points referenced. The current plan also continues a pattern of encroachment and demolition in residential neighborhoods in recent years that was referenced by other commoners as departmental buildings creep ever closer to where residents live. Mr. McCoy calls it, quote, "a preservation story", in the presentation that I attended last week. But we wouldn't have such a large public outcry, over 600 signatures in just a week, if that were the reality. A true preservation story would entail protecting and preserving our town's history and architectural treasures, not displacing or destroying them. Would a real preservation story propose replacing a stately 1929 manor within an historic district with a 2024 edifice that is out of place and incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood and streetscape? Most here are clearly saying no. I've talked to a lot of my neighbors about this over the past week, since learning of it myself. Like me, most people simply weren't aware of this aspect of the plan and most were distressed to hear it. But disappointingly, many I talked to were flat-out cynical. They tell me, it doesn't matter, they don't listen, and nobody will stop them. Is this really true in our town? Are there no checks and balances? Should our community not bother safeguarding the historic district neighborhood from unchecked expansion? There must be another way. Can't we find a workable solution and restore faith that the university will listen and respond, that the town will draw the line at a bridge too far? Per municipal ordinance, this Historical Preservation Commission is charged to, quote, "preserve the integrity and authenticity of the historic preservation districts and to ensure the compatibility of new structures therein." So we're all waiting here today for your decision. And that's why all these fine folks are present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, I don't see any more electronic hands raised, but I did send out a chat to everyone in the public pool.
Okay. Well, then, I think we can take a break in the public comment and we would move on to our own commission and we can actually get comments from our fellow commissioners.
Madam Chair, there is one hand raised. Do you want to hold off on that?
Oh, all right. Yeah, yeah, we should finish up the public comment.
Okay, David Kinsey will be promoted.
Okay.
And there's another person too.
Okay. David, can you turn on your video? Oh, there you are.
There it is, okay. Hello, one and all.
Hi.
My name's David Kinsey. I'm a licensed professional planner, New Jersey like Christine. I'm a fellow of the College of Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I was actually born in Princeton and I've lived here since 1985. And I'm a double graduate alumnus of the university. And I've been teaching planning at Princeton since 1998. My day job is as a professional planner, working throughout New Jersey and in Connecticut. You've heard many eloquent, important statements today. I support wholeheartedly the overall project of the university to build spectacular new complexes for great research and teaching. But it's the entrance on Prospect Avenue that is problematic. As we've learned this today, the proposal is to have a theorist pavilion, a smaller structure on Prospect Avenue. That can happen somewhere in this complex, but by preserving the court building. In fact, maybe even the court club is appropriate and has spaces where people might be able to gather, think, individual offices talk, what theorists would do. And there's certainly plenty of room for connectivity with the portion of that lot and the existing vacant lot, connectivity for a road, for people to walk, for pathways. But the current scheme is simply just not appropriate and simply doesn't comply with all the standards that you've heard so eloquently and clearly expressed, particularly in Clifford Zink's presentation. The planning issue before the planning board, the critical one, is the variance. This commission gives advice to the planning board. And the key advice that I suggest you offer is to accept wholeheartedly your staff members' review, an excellent report by Ms. Kim. But with the addition to point out that it's the benefits must outweigh the detriments. She made the point, but the benefits need to be outlined. What are the benefits from this destruction of a registered site, a building in a registered district and demolishing the three structures compared to the obvious detriment of all of that anti-preservation activity? The planning rationale has simply not been provided to you to support a recommendation favoring the variance that has been requested. So in conclusion, I urge you to advise the planning board to reject the variance application. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, one more person.
Okay.
Thomas Kaufman.
Okay.
Will be elevated to.
I think, I think enough has been said and I think that all points have been expressed. And I certainly agree with my former neighbor there, Mr. Kinsey. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
One more person raise their hand.
Okay, all right.
Um, last name is, I believe it's Suzo, so I will be promoting that person.
Duazo, hi.
Sorry.
Uh, thank you to all the presenters. I just also wanted to, I appreciated that last comment. And I think the plans were really fabulous. And they'll be bringing a lot of things to the university, but it just seems that somebody made a choice to push the project this little bit up to Prospect Avenue. And instead of trying to work around that, it's just been forced on everything else in the plan. So the the buildings would be a great improvement. So the buildings would be a great improvement, but it just seems a real blind eye to the site and unnecessary. And to reiterate, I don't see any convincing reason that we shouldn't have a over, forget the historic issue of it and allow for variance. I also think it would be great if there were more opportunity if things are opening up that people could come in and look at the plants, physical plants themselves, to get more of a view. But I know at the times that may not be a possibility. But I would also encourage the commission to reject the application. Thank you for your efforts and time.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Suazo, can you provide your first name for the record?
Sure, Paul.
Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suazo. All right.
Not a thing, no more. I don't see anyone else's hand.
All right, all right, we're gonna finish it up here, okay?
I believe we can't hear you.
I'm not, I don't see anyone.
No, I didn't either. Aren't any other hands raised at this time?
Okay, so we're done? Elizabeth?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I'm opening this up to the commission members, maybe starting with Elric, any comments?
Oh, no need to reiterate. What I will say is, first of all, I'm not overly impressed with the odd compilation of different, it's very busy design for this whole thing. And I find a lot of it to be politically correct, but pretty aesthetically wanting. Aside from all that, it's obvious that some of the best architecture is that which faces an adverse condition and actually makes it into a prominent design feature. And the opportunity is here for just that. I just think it needs to be revisited. I think the university certainly can call upon professionals who can look at this and scrutinize better way of presenting this very different compilation of buildings drawn through the Prospect Avenue experience. I agree with those who think that this is just gonna lead to more, to further expansion. Just in the twenty-five years I've been on this commission, we've sat through the removal particularly of the community along Alexander. And I think partially in response to that, we have worked diligently to try to preserve as much as possible the character of the Witherspoon-Jackson area. This is, as someone said, the clubhouses are a wonderful transition from the university campus and the residential area to the east. One thing, one final point, and that is when we considered the twenty Nassau Project over the last year, one of the most telling parts of that was their, the study that had been made of the impact of the new structures on the community along Backstreet. Prospect Avenue got that name because it was a prospect. It was supposed to be, people had told me that that was favored over places like University Place, of Library Place and whatever, because of the hellful breezes that would come up from the millstone Stony Brook Valley and the long views. My sense is that the height of those buildings is gonna be particularly intrusive on the experience of those buildings on the south side of Prospect, the rear, the southern facing elevations. And I would urge that at the very least, some similar study be made to the one that we looked at on twenty Nassau. I'm interested to hear from everyone else. I particularly appreciate the people who have taken on this effort and the neighbors and members of the community who voiced their concerns. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Shirley, I just wanted to ask you, because you know a lot about the clubs, what you think of this project?
I unmuted myself, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I had the privilege of having lunch with Mr. Zink, actually at our Roberts' house about two years ago. And he talked about his book and he gave you an autographed copy. And I said, there's something missing in this book. I said, there's a lot of architectural buildings and it's beautiful, but you don't have anything about the people who sustained these buildings, who sustained the inside, who were the cooks, who were the cleaners. Our family, if you talk to any member of a family who's been here at least twenty years, they can tell you that their mother or their father or an uncle worked at the avenue. And when I give a tour and I stop in front of the Robson House, there's a little part of the Robson House where, because it used to be a rooming house after Paul Robson was no longer in that house. And at the bottom, there was a place where the men who worked on the avenue would come to play cards or to rest. And people would ask me, what is the avenue? Well, the avenue was Prospect. And I remember my mother ironing her little white apron and saying she's going to work on the avenue, or my uncle who worked on the avenue, which was wonderful for us because, you know, when you open up a refrigerator, you can get ice cream anytime you want. Well, living on Oakley Street, we had iceboxes. And when my mother came home with ice cream, that was a big thing. So there were a lot of people who sustained all of those clubs. And one person in particular was Mr. George Reeves. Anybody who knows Jim Floyd, it was Jim Floyd's father-in-law, who sustained not only the clubs, but also was the cook for Blairstown. So there was a lot of connection between our community and those eating clubs. And as an historian of this community, I like to keep things historical. And even though I know this is something that the university would like to do, I don't see destroying three noted houses and moving a building that can be fixed up where it is and not destroy the houses. So that's my connection with the Prospect House and all of our families who sustained and worked on the avenue.
All right, thank you, Shirley, thank you. Let's see, Tom, I know you had a lot of comments.
Very good and interesting discussion. I really appreciate all the perspectives being offered. My, I have questions I would just like to ask the university friends and see if, in the context of our further discussions, if any of these could be answered. So I'll just list these and whatever ones are relevant to pick up, I'll be grateful for the answers. First, as an alumnus, I'm familiar with the reunion and the post-football traditions of returning alumni to work their way up after a football game to Prospect Street for their after-game parties. So what is to become of that conduit? I'm not quite seeing how streamlined that conduit will become after this new building. Number two, what will happen to the parking lots behind the clubs? Are these currently owned by the university and have they been acquired? Three, I'd like to kindly ask, what has happened indeed to the trees along Prospect? In the time since I was a university student back in the seventies, several have been felled, of course, as we have mentioned. Four, what is the future of this parking garage in the midst of all this? That is the real thorn amongst all the roses here. And not to invoke a Charlesian term, but that's the car bunker that we have to deal with as we try to figure out the whole transition and integration of this, should buildings be moved and so on. I would like to understand better, what is the future use of the old EAS building? Also Ivy Lane, will that be converted to a walkway now without cars? And if that is the case, what is to become of the diverted traffic? Ms. Stein made a mention to this, and I think this is actually an unspoken issue that needs more discussion elsewhere around town with ideas to create Nassau Street as a one-way street, already Witherspoon Street, the closing of Ivy Lane. This traffic has to go somewhere, and so where do we suppose it's going to go? And I'll leave it there with, these are my questions for comment.
All right, well, I'll give the university a few minutes. But we can maybe move on to Roger and Frida, if you guys have comments.
Well, start, I came into this thinking it was not a particularly great idea. Listening to the university and was swayed a bit in their direction, but ultimately came out where many of my colleagues are coming out there's gotta be a better way to do this than to uproot the club and move it across the street. It just seems like, almost like a gimmick to me. In the favor of the university, they've come before our commission many times and I've always respected the work they've done. We disagreed with them on occasion, but they've always come up with workable solutions. They are interested in being good stewards of their historic legacy. There's no question about that. I just don't see that this solution to connectivity of the new buildings to the upper campus is the way to do it. The solution does seem to be workable to me.
Okay, thanks. Frida?
Well, I think most, I kind of, I agree with most of the comments. But there's something Roger said that occurred to me when I read all of the texts, and that was, it seems like sort of a gimmick, because why would you move an eating house to a whole other area of the, you know, of Prospect? And then I think somewhere then, please correct me if I'm wrong, there was a text that said the university will then recommend that that entire area of Prospect, including the moved eating house, the university would recommend that it would be included in a historic district. I think I read something that, it seems like a roundabout way to achieve historic district status. So, yeah, I don't understand it. It's quite confusing to me considering the university owns so much land in town. And I agree with others who said that it should really be reconsidered and rethought out. And, yeah, I think that's where it needs to go. Because it doesn't, it doesn't sound logical to me.
All right, thank you. Elizabeth, is David still here? David Shore?
Yes. He just unmuted himself.
I'm here, I'm not dead yet.
Okay. I just can't see you, so please, please put in your two cents.
Well, I have two cents, two thoughts. One, rereading the ordinance that establishes the Historic Preservation Commission. And I read where it talks about, indeed it talks about properties within a district and those that are not in a district. And that what it really talks about is our working hard to utilize our historic resources. And when I hear a lot of members of the public come forward today who don't even know the distinction perhaps of local historic district, national registered district, or things that are noted to be on the master plan as important to the community, what I hear is that a lot of people have faith in the commission trying to protect the qualities of either neighborhood or history or the design context that makes Princeton special. I think that's a very rewarding thing to hear. And I think that the university probably is hearing that loud and clear also. And I would think is saying, gee, what can we do with this design? What input do we give back to our designers to come up with something that's better? And then just a second thought was the three houses, their history, the small ones that could be easily discarded. They actually have quite a lot of history. And I'm sorry that the consultant discussing those houses missed this. Those houses have such connection to the event of Prospect Avenue, that those houses were moved in order for Prospect Avenue to become what it became. And that they are indeed significant to the whole story there. They aren't just throwaway buildings. So those are my comments. I feel strongly that we're hearing a lot from the community. And going back to what I was talking about earlier, what our charge is, I think we have a pretty clear direction of what we're supposed to be doing in terms of our recommendation. That's what I have to say for right now.
Thanks, David. Well, I agree, I feel like we have unity here. Full disclosure, I studied with someone who studied with someone who studied with Panofsky. So, but that said, I think that the entrance to the EAS building, the way it's conceived, seems very problematic. And I don't think we can recommend the university moving forward without reconsidering the available land nearby and leaving the club where it is and just reexamining how the circulation would work. But I definitely think we're in unity here. And Ed, do you need anything else? I mean, we're, we can kind of go over the memo points, but as far as a vote or something goes, do we need to proceed that way or?
One more quick question, please, Julie.
Sure, Tom.
What is, please forgive me on my naive tale, what is the land that people think the university has that should be used instead of the access to Prospect Street? Is there some adjacent land behind or across the street that they're thinking of?
Next to the club, there's a vacant lot.
Oh, mentioned made by one.
And so.
One of the commenters referred to, there's a spot behind the building on Ivy Lane that's reserved for future construction. So somebody had suggested that as well as an alternate location.
And I'm sorry, David, you didn't really get a chance to, David Cohen, you didn't really get a chance to comment. I don't know if you wanna comment now or?
I actually, I try never to comment since I'm the liaison and not actually a member of the commission. But I would actually like to hear the answers to Tom's questions that he asked before. He had a whole list of them for the university. And I think before the commission sort of weighs in, it'll be interesting to hear the answers to some of those. I thought they were germane.
I can do that now, if that would be helpful.
That would be great.
Okay, so if I captured all of them. I think the first one was about reunions and the football games and events and the kind of movement back from the stadium district back up to the clubs. I think that those pathways would sort of find new routes. I think I tried to make a point in one of the slides, I know I had to go quickly. There's a lot of peracity and movement through the site, both accessible and through stairs. And so there's a, it's less of a straight line as you have with Roper, but could be a festive route back up to the eating clubs for after-game and after-event activities. In terms of the parking lots for the clubs, that's the role that Leafy Lane will play. The clubs that currently have parking that has access to Ivy Lane Western Way would have access via Leafy Lane, which we're providing as part of the design. Regarding the trees along Prospect, I think that's a, you know, a bit of. Regarding the Trees Along Prospect, I think that's a, you know, a bit of incremental destruction of the neighborhood over time. I don't know if there was a moment in time, I have a feeling it was just attrition, that the trees gradually died and were not replaced, or the utility poles came in, utility lines came in and took out a lot of those trees. So I don't, it's an interesting history, but I have a feeling it's just attrition and people not paying attention to the loss of those beautiful trees. But hopefully we're at a position where we can restore them. The future parking garage, that's under construction right now on the, where it has been discussed and approved and permitted. So I don't have the details of when, I don't, I can't remember the date when that parking garage is opening, but that's under construction.
I'm sorry to interrupt Ron, but Tom was asking about the existing garage behind the white wall.
That's right. That will continue to play the role that it plays right now. We don't have any plans to do anything with that parking garage. So that's not part of our current thinking. We hope a day comes soon when we don't have to build garages, but that hasn't happened so far. When we started this campus plan, we really thought that we would, that we'd be on a trajectory toward that plan, but that hasn't quite happened yet. Regarding the EAS building, I'm going to come to that last because I answered the question incorrectly or not precisely enough in the sprab meeting. I'm going to ask Emily to be prepared to come back and talk about the details of the EAS building. I'll sketch it in an overview that only a small bit of it would be vacated by these projects. This is an evolutionary development of this neighborhood, and it's really when mechanical engineering and electrical engineering and civil engineering, when they move down to this new neighborhood in the future over the next 30 years, that the existing engineering building would be vacated. That's a kind of broad view, and Emily can jump in and give the details. Question about Ivy Lane, Ivy Lane Western Way, would it become a walkway? Exclusive of vehicular traffic? Then she says, no, vehicular traffic will continue to use Ivy Lane and Western Way. The demand on Ivy Lane and Western Way will go down significantly for vehicles because the parking garage at the new parking garage, which is under construction, will draw traffic down to that parking garage. So our traffic study demonstrates that Ivy Lane Western Way become less crowded with vehicles and not very crowded at all to begin with, but it's very light traffic. The design is to propose a advisory shoulders on either side for bicycles to make it more bicycle-friendly with a single lane of traffic in the middle that can go both ways. So this is what's done on College Road right now over between University Place and the Graduate College. So importantly, I wanted to point out about the comments about the additional property that we have. This, at the southeast corner of the site, there is a footprint for a future building for the Department of Electrical and Computer Engineering, formerly Electoral ELE. That is not in the distant future, that will happen fairly soon, and that footprint is reserved precisely for that building, so that site is not available. And that goes to the point of, you know, one of the reasons why we need the site where 91 Prospect is located. And I explained this to Clifford and to Carl in a detailed meeting where we went through, where we reviewed all the plans that they shared with us of alternative strategies. Those plans do not work because of zoning setbacks and other requirements that are impinging on the site. And the, so it's really the functional, there is no other place on the site for that program to go and to be programmatically connected to provide the functional requirement between the research labs and the theorist labs. So that is the primary reason. Connectivity is an additional reason, but the functionality is the primary reason. And then Jimmy Just Holster, just one other question that I think Frida asked, which was just to clarify that what we have offered to do, one of the concerns from Clifford was that we would be moving 91 Prospect out of the historic district. And so we offered to initiate a conversation with SHPO to redraw the boundaries of the historic district, so the building would remain in the historic district. That was the purpose of that. It does seem twisted and convoluted, but that was the sort of purpose of that. So Emily, can you just put some detail on the question that Mr. Pyle asked about the EAS and what does and does not move to these new neighborhoods?
Certainly, and would it be helpful for me to reshare the site plan so everyone can see the future development?
That would be helpful, yeah.
So it's this area here.
And that's not just a, that's not just a general outline, that's a very precise outline that's tied to the design of a loading dock and all of the servicing for this site.
And the size of the ECE program in order to fit within the zoning envelope and required heights and things like that. So yes, I can just speak briefly about the two engineering entities that are moved down here. Bioengineering, as Ron stated in the sprab presentation, is a new institute that is growing out of the Chemical and Biological Engineering Department. These researchers are currently housed mostly in Hoyt, as well as a few within the natural sciences over here along Washington. So Hoyt will be vacated for the most part. The CBE department is housed in Equod, so that's the only, those are the only attendees or occupants of the building that will move out of the Equod. And eventually, the Electrical and Computer Engineering Department would move out of Equod as well.
Great. Thank you. I just want to check with Tom if he felt his questions for answer.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you very thorough. Thank you.
And Tom, I just wanted to add with-
All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, just with this, you were asking about the trees, either related to this or other projects, the university is looking at putting new trees up and down Prospect within the right of way. And I can't remember the number, but it's something like 70 or 80 trees, so it's a-
That's right. I saw that.
Okay.
Very intrigued, Chris, I'm very intrigued to see the tools of your trade of the wall behind you.
That's a collection of incoming arrows.
They're not on fire yet.
All right, so back to business. Are there any changes of thought, or are people pretty much sticking with their statements? If so, I think we have the makings of a very unified memo. Ed, do you think we need any motions or anything like that?
Well, Madam Chair, I think from the hearing that you just conducted and the comments made by members of HPC, that there's a strong consensus by HPC not to endorse the application as currently proposed and not to encourage the demolition of the three houses, nor the relocation of the court club. And I think that would be the basis for the memorandum that we would send to the planning board, which will have to decide the site plan and also have to decide the variance application. You don't do that, but you can comment about that. But I think from the five or six pages of notes that I have, I think it's pretty clear the consensus of the commission.
Madam Chair, can I just make a couple of closing comments? Just to, because there were a lot of comments made in the public comment and by the commission. Can I just say a few things? Sure.
Yes.
So I'm under no illusion that I'm going to change what was just summarized by Ed. But I would like to point out that 91 Prospect is not subject to state or federal review, and that the three houses are not in any local district. So there's no regulatory control over them. I really want to emphasize the functional incompatibility between 91 Prospect and the Chemical and Biological Engineering Building. I'm sure that because we have reused so many existing buildings, there's a sense that why can't you just reuse another one? But the functional requirements are quite specific and precise, and I can, we can go into them in detail, but it's just simply not practical. We've done it again and again on other projects, and it's just, it just can't happen on this one. I would say that the comments about this being a kind of forebearer of the university continued encroaching into the neighborhood. There's really no basis for that. If anything, the tradition of the university is one of stewardship. So, and as I said, when I showed the 30-year master plan, the campus plan, that's not a deceitful case. That's not a, that's a very honest document that says, here's where we imagine where we could place new buildings. And there's nothing on that plan indicated over the 30 years to suggest that we would, that we have any desires to relocate any university activities into this particular neighborhood. I would also just reiterate that evolution occurs. Again, things are not frozen in place. Buildings have moved on both sides of the street. There's nothing particularly regarding the historic preservation standards for a building being tied to its site. This is a street that has eating clubs on both sides of the street. So it's not like, this is not Vernon, that we would be moving it a very site-specific with a particular vista and moving it to another part of the site is really no damage. Right now, almost all of the clubs have put trees in their backyards for privacy and exclusivity. And so the vistas that come with the name Prospect have been voluntarily enclosed. And so it really doesn't have those kinds of vistas. Right now, 91 Prospect looks out into one of our ugliest buildings on the history of the university, the computer computing building, which nobody here is defending, by the way. What about that building? So those are, that's some of the points I would say in summary.
All right. Madam Chair?
And, yes, yes.
I just want to address Mr. McCoy's comment about the three historic houses that are not-
Elizabeth?
Yes.
You're fading out. We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to address Mr. McCoy's comment about the three Queen Anne historic houses that are not in the district. So during my research of the report, I did find that Prospect Avenue report, which was in draft form, which actually was probably the the report in which the former borough had recommended for it to be in a historic district. And with that, they had a map that shows it, and it was attached to my report, which actually delineates the properties within there, which actually includes it on the north side to go all the way to Murray Place. So if you read the recommended district within the master plan, it does talk about on both sides of Prospect and along portions of Washington, which would actually follow what that map says on there. And, you know, when there's a district that's recommended in the master plan, there is a vetting required where it has to be approved by the planning board in addition to the council. So, you know, it'll be great if they'd say, oh, yeah, whatever you want to put on there. That's not the case, and I think that those who actually sat on the borough township knew that, that there's a process. So I believe that this is the map that was used for it because it was generated around the same time that the master plan was approved.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. I just wanted to point out to the, like, almost 80 people participating, that the next step after this is the planning board meeting on June 17th. I think it's the 17th at 7:30, so that's when there will be another public hearing and a chance to comment. We will obviously create a memo, but, you know, there are other steps to this process. Are there any further comments? Otherwise, I think we're done. Yes, Tom?
Just to ask, what is the role of the alternates in this process at the moment?
I, just your comments, and you did a great job, so thank you.
Good.
And you're fine.
All right.
Julie, one, just one final thing.
So unless there are for, yes.
I want to just add, I think it will be in our memo, but, you know, I want to make sure that the university gets kudos for the project itself, not particularly the historic aspect of it, but as many people have said, this is a very exciting project and, you know, keeps the university in the forefront of educational institutions in this country. So I'd just like to make sure we're going to include that.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a great point. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for all the presentations, all the commentary, all the participation. We really appreciate it, and perhaps we'll see many of you on the 17th.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, members. Thank you, public. We appreciate it.
Bye. Bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you, David, for bringing my packet.
Julie, you're quite welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry I missed you. I was asleep.
I wanted a tour of your garden, but we'll do that another day.
Oh, okay. I'll tell my gardener. See you, Eric. See you, Elizabeth.
Bye. Have a good day. We ended early.